Ms. Spears. Mr. Bennet.
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Chaucie?
Here.
Robin Custer?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Lugo? Mr. Staborski?
Here.
And Mr. Valeski?
Here.
Reg, please. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
We will head into our committee of the whole meeting at this time. And we will begin with our student representative.
Good evening. I'm Ella Murray. I'll be informing you on what Cambridge Springs is up to. Starting with the elementary school. Mrs. Martinez, a third grade teacher, was recently surprised by Penn West University in Jet 24 with a Golden Apple Award. Big Ideas Learning presented Mrs. Martinez with a donation of $250 from her classroom. Ezra Mayers, the third grader who nominated Mrs. Martinez, mentioned a lesson in which Mrs. Martinez had the students manipulating noodles and candy as they learned about vertebrates and invertebrates. He also praised her talent at bringing books to life for her students. Congratulations, Mrs. Martinez. Fifth grade students recently explored career paths and went on a field trip to Crawford Tech with an interactive presentation. In the high school, last Friday, an assembly was held for eighth through eleventh grade students where the teachers introduced the classes they offer for the students. It really hyped the students up, making them excited to plan their classes for next year. Mr. Chaucie's finance and intro to business students, over the last three months, have been playing a stock market game with students around the whole state. They buy and sell stocks to see how they can make a profit or lose money. The Money Inquisitors with Abby Harrison, Lacey Prins, and Devon Elliston won first place in the region and fourth in the state. Two weeks ago, leadership students held a baked potato bar luncheon for both the high school and elementary staff. Prom is coming up on May 9th. The prom court was just announced. Congratulations to Amelia Holland, Ava Boylan, Maddie Carver, Kirsten Grubbs, Seth Glenn, Devon Lanowitz, Alex Dubay, and Gage Johnson. Team Interstellar, consisting of Tyson Finley, Anthony Landis, Bill Stanley, Jared Daly, and their bot Neil, won first place at the Meadville Robotics Tournament. They beat four-time champion from Cockerton and will be going to Nationals in Ohio. It was funny, the boys seemed more shocked about beating rival Cockerton than actually going to Nationals. You should have heard them. Oh, wait, you can hear them. Check out Cambridge Speaks on Spotify, and I interviewed them about their win. Check it out. Also, stay tuned with all of our other social medias for further updates. At the end of this week, the new edition of the Pitchfork will be out. Don't miss it. Thank you.
Keep it simple.
Next up is Gabby Jully. Julie's here tonight.
Yeah, I'm here in place of that. And Ella's absolutely right. I had to take a look at the pictures of the bots today. The boys were so excited about, this is what it looked like before, this is what it looked like after, and we beat Cockerton. Yeah, they could care less about going to Springfield. So, good evening, school board administration staff, students, and Penncrest community members. My name is Julie Franz. I'm the vice president of PAEA, and I'm speaking on behalf of nearly 200 teachers and educational specialists of this school district. Debbie Miller, our president, sends her regards. She is away attending to the medical needs of her family. When Deb said that she had a family member she needed to be there for, her daughter Alex, a 2018 grad of Cambridge Springs High School, and a 2023 grad of Lee Com with her doctorate in pharmacy degree, that brought two things to my attention. One, Penncrest truly provides a top-notch education. And two, Penncrest is a district where people really do matter most. First, I would like to focus on what is good about our schools. Too often, we get focused on problems and the negative, and at times, we forget that we are graduating students that have a solid learning foundation and a desire to achieve and learn. We are turning out skilled students who enter the workforce directly, students who enter trade or technical schools, and students who, as my colleague's daughter has chosen, enter college and graduate college. But above all this, we are striving to turn out students who have strong work ethics and morals, and who make this community or any other space they land in a better place. What I love about Penncrest is that we do not take that last part for granted, work ethic. We had recently brought a concern in this area to the board, and they have directed that to be addressed. And I applaud the board for looking at the challenges openly and calling together the stakeholders to solve them. As Board Member Brown said, we want our students engaged in meaningful experiences as seniors, maybe like the old senior projects of the past. And I know that Mr. Ford and Mrs. Feely are already coming up with ideas. We're up to the challenge of always making the products of our schools into real-world, real-world success stories. Secondly, I thought about Penncrest as a place where people matter most, as our leader, Mr. Ford, supports that by pushing for a safety-first philosophy. And that he is spreading across the district, and he talks about it each time in the community engagement nights. He is also backing up his words with decisions. Actions do speak louder than words. And his decisions are resonating that we have zero tolerance when it comes to threats and violence in our district. Staff, students, and families are clearly receiving the same message, that school is a safe place to grow and learn, and no one should ever feel otherwise. So, it is when we are focused on safety that I would like to once again bring to the board's attention class sizes. Crowded classes are likely to be the place where safety erodes. If the teacher is bombarded with individual issues, that they may not have the time to attend all students. And an already marginalized child may act out or lash out in frustration, and I seek for attention. Also, incidents may occur when a student is educationally frustrated and doesn't feel like they are getting the support that they need. We can't control the hand that some students are dealt with in life, but we can control class size. And in essence, afford them the greatest opportunity to overcome those cards. So, as we enter the tedious budget season, let's make class size our number-one goal. Knowing that in turn, that will positively impact all other aspects of our school. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Julie. Up next is the business manager, and I'm going to combine my report tonight with Kristen as we talk and go over the budget presentation.
All right, good evening. Kristen Swasher, business manager. We're going to give you the presentation of the proposed budget for '25-'26. The role of the school board in Pennsylvania plays a critical role in the budgeting process. They serve as the financial students of taxpayers' dollars while ensuring that educational needs of students are met. Three primary budget responsibilities of the school board is budget development and approval, financial oversight, and policy setting. Getting into our enrollment trend, as you can see, from '13 and '14 to '24-'25, we've had a decrease of students by 23%. So, we've had declining student data over the past 10 years. You can see Maplewood Elementary here is increasing enrollment as well as Maplewood High School. Those are our only two schools that have increased in enrollment over the past decade. Our special education numbers are actually decreasing. Last year, we were around almost 19%. This year, we are at 18.04% of special needs students. So, we went from 465 to 438 in the past year.
Can I speak there?
You can.
Back to special education. This past week, we were audited. And this is every six years. Every six years. And coming out of the audit, I knew this, but I'm just going to give kudos to Mrs. Feely and her team. We had a really good audit, and she might be talking a little bit more in detail about it. But our audit, from a superintendent's perspective, we should be proud of what we're doing with special education students in the district. So, Patty, good job. Okay, Kristen.
And on the 18% number, I mean, some schools have 25% of their student population as special needs. So, with Penncrest being at 18%, we're doing a really good job with special ed numbers. Moving into our non-public schools, our homeschooling students and private tutoring, we have a little over 500 students that live in our district, but they do not attend our public schools. Listed over there is your top 10. You can see the big hitters there. We do not get any money for those students in our state subsidy formula because they're not in our buildings. They are private school students.
Can you go back there?
Yeah.
I might do this a lot tonight, so... If you think about that number, that is bigger than most of our schools enrollment-wise, if you add that up. And so, I think that's key. We talk about enrollment, we see the enrollment trends, right? By the way, I'm in no way cutting on where people are going. I just think it's good to look at the data. And so, I just thought I would share that with you. I didn't realize this. This is my first time going through the buzzer season. And Kristen put this slide up, I was like, huh, okay. So, anyway, it's just another piece of the puzzle of Penncrest.
Moving on to outside cyber enrollment numbers. We have currently 92 students in our outside cyber programs, which is the lowest to date. Each one of those regular students costs the district $16,082.51. And for special ed students, it costs us $26,888.61. And we have 66 regular students and 26 special ed students. These are the lowest numbers. And special ed, the state redid the PD 363, so that formula has changed for our number. So, this cost was reduced this year by like $3,000 starting January 1st. So, I mean, it helps, but we're still not there. You'll see later on in the presentation about what the state is doing with cyber, so we'll go ahead and we'll get to that point. But cyber, it costs us a lot of money. So, currently, to date, and this was through March, we spent $1.2 million for kids that live in our district but go to outside cyber. So, between our outside cyber and our private school kids, we have over 60 students that live in our district but go elsewhere, that we do not get those funds for. And you'll see over here, these are our top enrollments for our outside cyber schools. And since we started our PCA program, we've brought a lot of those students back in-house, and it helped save us on our outside cyber numbers. So, we have a great program right here in Penncrest, which was started, I believe this is year four now, right by that program. So, that really has helped drop these numbers, but it's still pretty significant. Last year, you can see, we spent almost $2 million. So, once we get to what the state's trying to do to help, we'll move over those numbers and how it could potentially impact our budget for this year. The certified tuition rate, this is our per pupil expense. So, this comes from the state gives me these numbers. So, this is calculated based on our AFR and our child accounting numbers. So, this is the number if somebody that lives outside our district wants to attend our Penncrest School District, this is what we charge them to attend. For an elementary student, it's $13,086.58. And for your high school, it's $15,066.65. And you can see the breakdown below of how they go ahead and calculate these numbers. So, I know there's a lot of talk, usually with your per pupil expense and how we spend more than the average, which when we looked up the average, it's right around 18,000, correct? My notes, I couldn't see them. So, 18,000, and I think the national average is around 17,000, and that's based on the Commonwealth data. So, the state gives us these numbers. So, you cannot take our budget number and divide it by our enrollment number to get our cost per student to educate. The reason being, we have a lot of pastor funds in that number. With the IU, we have federal number or federal programs in there. So, you can't simply take that number, and I think that kind of gets misconstrued. We kind of take the overall budget number and divide it by our total enrollment. So, these are basically what the state is telling us based on the data that they incorporate into the formula of how much it costs to educate a student in our elementary schools and our high schools. So, again, if someone that lives in, say, General McLean or Titusville area, if they want to come to Penncrest, this is what they pay us to come to our schools. And we do have, we've had some in the past. Penncrest's transportation, we cover 409 square miles. Cambridge Springs is 115 miles. Maplewood is 220 miles. And Sagertown is our smallest attendance area for transportation with 74 miles. We are the second largest in the state of Pennsylvania, I believe, for transportation. So, we cover a lot of area for our six schools. We have two bus contractors, GGNC and Price Transportation, which was previously PM Bussing. This is just broken down by attendance area. So, you can see how many students we have enrolled at each attendance area and how many buses we have on each route. And then, it goes over the average time per route and the average roster kids per route.
That last bit there on the average route, that's an important number to consider because that limits our flexibility in putting more out. I mean, less out, excuse me. Because we're already at such a high number in minutes. In order, say, we wanted to disband a couple routes, that's going to go way up because they're already on a bus so long to begin with. So, I think, I don't want us to miss that point of that. I have something about four or five surprising things in this as I've gone through this process. This was one of them. So, just wanted to point that out to the board and the public.
So, our estimated, the total cost that we spend on IEP van transportation is around $419,390. And I have it broken down here by attendance area and how many vans or buses that we have on the road per attendance area and the average kids that are rostered to those vehicles. And this is all IEP-driven, so we cannot... The IEP team has determined that there is a need to have those students on a van or a bus, and sometimes they need a Lyft bus. So, that is driven by the IEP, which is the law that we cannot, we have to provide that transportation. Our non-public transportation, so we have to, by law, transport to the private schools in our area, I believe they're a 10-mile radius. So, these are all the private schools that we currently transport students to. And the cost of those are $509,272 estimated. And all these numbers are based on the beginning of the year. At any point, I mean, tomorrow, these numbers could change as far as your students going to those locations and that. But we do have to transport all the non-public students to their school if they choose to. Some parents choose to self-transport, but others, we do transport. Other transportation that we do, we go to Bethesda, the Barber Center, St. Utica, and we have to transfer homeless students by law. So, you can see here the different van routes that we have on the road and how many students are on those vans. You'll see over here, we have one van, one student. That is due to the location of those students and where they live within our district and the schools that they attend. We try as much as possible, consolidate those routes as best as we can. These numbers have changed, obviously, since the beginning of the year. So, I believe we currently have like five students total now. And we have tried to condense those routes, but it is based on where they go to school, where they live, where they're currently living.
We have, literally, we have people at all pens across various... I'm not even going to say Crawford County. It's across various counties. Like, we go to Erie County, we might have to go down to Vanango County. So, in order to combine these, which we would love to do, but because of the location and where they're at, it's just about impossible. So, that's the one thing that I know has been asked of me from board members about this. So, I dug into this pretty heavy with Kristen because I wanted to know about it also. So, we tried to be very transparent in exactly what we're doing here and why we're doing it. So, that's where we're at. If you have any questions?
No.
Go ahead.
No, no. Age-based video.
Thanks, man. Now, for the homeless students. Like, I know, like, there's one in Erie County. Now, why do we have to go pick that student up to bring up?
That was my question.
They're deemed homeless if their living situation... If that student is not living with mom and dad at home, if they're shackled up with somebody else, living with somebody else, we have to, because it's your last district of residence. So, that's why we have to transport them. Patty, would you like to elaborate on that?
Sure. It comes back to the school of origin where the student was originally attending. And what we try to do is work with those districts where they have, they're currently living, to see if they have transportation coming our way or we have transportation going their way. And then, we split those costs. So, if we have a student living in Erie County, that cost of that transportation is split between the two school districts, even though they're coming to our district and we're providing the transportation. We bill them at the end of the year for those services, for half of those services.
So, last school of origin, so like, each school year, does that change? Like, if he's in ninth grade, he went to Sagertown, moves to Erie County, and stays in Erie County for 10th, 11th, and 12th, his last origin would have been ninth grade year. So, we've got to do that for all three years after that?
So, it's really not necessarily about the school of origin. When a student is deemed McKinney-Bento eligible or homeless, then they actually have the right to choose what school they want to attend. And it does not have to be the school they were previously at or the school that they moved to. We, though, have to follow up with the transportation responsibility for that if they choose our, to attend our district. So, it's one of those unfunded mandates that we have to...
We have no choice to say, you're living in Erie, go to Erie school.
Correct.
We cannot do that.
So, there's literally nothing we can do, anything?
There is not. We try to do the best we can to work with our neighboring districts.
As long as they meet the criteria.
Correct, as long as they're criteria.
But if they meet that criteria, then there's nothing we can do.
But this is one of those things that's good for the board and the public to see. This is, it's only 109,000, there's 109,000 more. This is a teacher we could hire.
It's actually a little bit more than that this year because, again, these are based on the beginning of the year. And now, we have, instead of three students, we have five.
I'm just using that number because it's safer. You know, that's a teacher that we really need.
Well, and those are five students that we couldn't get on our typical transportation routes. A lot of our students that are McKinney and Bento eligible end up on our regular buses, so they, you know, it's only those ones that are outside, living outside, that we have to find vans or alternate transportation.
Moving into our revenue streams, so the district is funded by local revenue, state revenue, and federal revenue. Your other is sale of fixed assets or refund of prior year expenditures, which fall under your local funds. So, underneath all these different funds, you can see, for local, our biggest one is the real estate taxes. For your state, the biggest one is your basic ed subsidy. In transportation, in special ed, and then we do receive the title funds. Along with our revenue, we are a multi-county school district, so we are located in Crawford County and Vanango County. We have one little county in Vanango. So, with that, the STEB, State Tax Eclonization Board, they use a formula, so when we change our milage rate, it automatically changes the Vanango County rate. So, that's important. We don't set Vanango County's rate. We only set Crawford's, and it's based on... Crawford's rate is how Vanango goes along with it. So, with the real estate taxes, there's a lot of talk about a mil. So, what is a mil actually worth? A mil is every dollar, or we receive every dollar for every $1,000 of assessment property value. So, basically, a $35,000 home that's assessed, keep in mind, assessment is different than market value, would generate $35 for every mil. So, the current milage rate is 57.75. So, the revenue generated from that property would be $2,021.25. Moving into our state funds, so we are getting PCCD grant funds. We have applied for a lot of the grants through PCCD that we're eligible for. We've applied for some and not received them. Last year, we applied, and we did receive these three. So, they are a two-year grant. So, we have the School Safety and Mental Health Grant, which we are using to put bollards in, to secure all of our entrances at every school, and to help with the cost of our school police officers. The Notorious Grant is for the K-12 classroom support. And the School Mental Health Grant pays for contracted mental health services within our district. Again, all these grants have strings attached to them, and you have to write them for what they're specifically designed for. And then, they can choose based on the criteria and the need of the district. So, we can't just use them for anything. We wrote these grants specifically for those criteria. Moving into our healthcare, so we are part of the Norbit Trust, which was established in 1992. There's 19 schools in the trust and the Korean Technical Center in Meadville. It's administered by Health International. It's a self-insured program. So, what does that mean? The district does not pay for... We don't pay a premium for health insurance through Highmark. We just pay all the claims. So, anytime an employee goes to the doctor and has a claim, we're basically paying for that claim on the back end. So, we don't pay for premium shares. We just pay for the healthcare claims directly. And we have safety guards in place, so a mini-pole covers our high-cost claims. So, we're reliable, or we're on the hook for $110,000. And then, anything that goes over $110 hits the mini-pole to $300,000. Anything over $300,000, if it's a high-cost claim, goes to the insurance, the stop-loss insurance. So, healthcare has definitely been a challenge. On this slide, you'll see in '21-'22 till now, we used to be funding. We fund this at a composite rate per employee. So, we were funding $1,546 per every employee we have on our healthcare. And you can see by this slide, this is the number of employees on our healthcare. So, our numbers are going down based on our staffing needs and decreases, but our healthcare costs are going up. So, this year, we're funding per employee $2,550. Our healthcare costs and claims, again, we're self-funded, so we pay everything, all those claims. You can see here the breakdown. The red is your medical claims, and the gray is your prescription claims. So, this year, we're pretty close, like 70-30% on where we're standing currently on our claims. So, moving into the high-cost claims, the new GLP-1 drugs that I'm sure you guys have heard a lot in the media, currently, that makes up 36% of our prescription data. So, we have 93 claimants on these prescription drugs. So, we've paid this year through, this is through January, I believe, $542,829 of our total prescription cost of $1.5 million. So, the GLP-1 drugs are making up 36% of our prescription cost, which is huge. So, we are looking at ways to get that number reduced for next year. High-cost claims are roughly about 36% of our total cost claims. So, currently, we have 946 total members on our insurance. That includes employees and dependents. 28 of those high-cost claims are over $25,000. So, that's kind of like the benchmark we use for a high-cost claim. So, we have 28 over that $25,000 mark. Six of those 28 are over $110,000. So, like I said, between $110 and $300, the mini-pole covers that for us. So, all the other districts that are in that trust help cover that cost for us, like the cost-sharing pool. And then, we had two claims go over $300,000 that we had to submit to the stop-loss insurance carrier. So, you can see our total high-cost claims are $1.3 million of our total $3.3 million in medical claims this year. Again, this data is through January. Moving into our staffing, so we currently... Moving into our staffing, so we currently, in this year's budget, we have, in the '25-'26 budget, we have 346 staff. Last year's budget, we had 362 at the beginning of the year. So you can see the breakdown here, professional staff, support staff that are 180 days, 260 days. We added our SPOs, and you can see our administrators and directors. So moving on with staffing and enrollment trends. So this slide, you can see from '17-'18, we had 402 staff. And currently, we have 347, so it's a 14% reduction since '17-'18. Student enrollment, here you can see, '17-'18 data to current data, we also had a 14% reduction. So we are reducing staff as we're reducing students. As students are leaving and our enrollment's not up, we are reducing staff at the same rate.
This is another slide that hit me pretty good, you know, I was, this is important. This is one of the things that I always wanted to look at is like, as our enrollment decreases, how's our staff, you know what I mean? But we were shocked, it's 14% both sides. So I think the district's, since '17-'18, done a great job of keeping their enrollment and staffing in line, so. Thank you.
Moving on to our debt. So as you guys know, most of you, half of you are probably here when we took out the bonds in 2020, 2021, and 2022. So we took out those three bonds. So those total payments for this year, including, is 1.7 million. And then we also are liable for the VOTEC bond based on our share of the students in the Crawford County VOTEC. So that's 30.6%. So that debt this year was estimated to be 218,346. So our total debt in this year's budget is $1,925,540. Capital projects that we have slated for the '25-'26 school year, you'll just see here, it's based on each elementary school. We have certain projects slated that come out of Fund 32, which we fund from our general fund, gets transferred every year. And we budget 400,000 for that amount. And that has been a consistent amount, amount for, since Mr. Hobson was here. So we have not increased that number, except for the one year when the previous bond ran out. We were able to put that million dollars in between that '18-, '19-, and '20' year when you guys took out that other bond. We were able to move that money into there to keep the budget level. Otherwise, we currently fund that at 400,000. The high school projects, these are just the projects that are slated for the '25-'26. Again, this can all change based on need, depending if something would happen. We might have to switch some of this around. But currently, these are the projects that are slated. Moving into the actual budget numbers. So '25-'26, our revenues are projected to be $59,446, sorry, And our expenditures are $60,411,98, with a total deficit budget this year of $1,366,416. This is where our starting point is. Last year, if you remember, we were at $3.7 million when I presented in April. So we're, we're in a much better spot this year than last year. So this is, this is pretty exciting. Currently, our budget deficit is $1,46,132. So you can see, our expenditures only increased 2.3% from last year to this year's budget. And we'll get into the details of that. But that's, that's a pretty good increase overall. Again, this is preliminary. We still monitor this and look at this to try to find reductions in our numbers. And we don't have concrete numbers from the state yet. So we're hopeful that we can, we can bring that 1.3 down even a little bit more at our next meeting.
We're waiting for a few numbers to come back. And we're cautiously optimistic that we're going to get some more better news to bring that number even further down, which hopefully here in a couple of weeks, we'll be able to share that with you all. So we, I think every day, we've been going through various parts of our budget to try to keep bringing it down and bringing it down. This, this reflects, there are no staff in that number. Okay, I just, I want to make, I want to make sure we're clear on that. Right now, there's no staff cuts at all, okay? This number is all what we've done. So we haven't even, we haven't looked at staffing yet at this point. Let me rephrase that. We have, we're still looking at that because resignations just came in. But this number does not include that at all, okay?
So this breaks down the total $60 million budget for your expenditures. Breaks it down by your objects, your major objects. So basically, majority of that increase, you can see here in the benefits. Like I said before, that healthcare cost went up about 20% per employee this year. So a majority of that cost falls in this, this line. Also, your Peers' cost, that goes up. It was very minimal this year. We'll get to that. But I believe it was 109,000, so that's also in this line item. You'll see the salary benefits went up 314,790. Again, very minimal in comparison to where we were last year. We have decreased some of these categories. And you'll see this number here, I put a little asterisk just because PDE, it's the change of objects reporting. We moved our electric from our 400, excuse me, our 400 lines to our 600 line. So you'll see that's in there. So within this, this is not just your general supplies. It's not what we call 610 and 611 for clothing. This is, also includes your natural gas, includes your gasoline, your diesel. So there's a lot of other big items in that line item. It's not just general, like office supplies or building-level supplies. This graph kind of puts the whole budget in the perspective of where the major categories are. So you can note salary and benefits, 67% of our overall budget. So that is where we save, in the, save in the budget is in your staffing. You'll also notice our debt is in there, that's 4%. Professional services, materials, other purchases. So there's really not a lot of discretionary spending in this, within the budget. I think we kind of showed that last year. The majority of it is driven by contracts and services that we need for the students. This is just breaking our revenue down by each source. So you'll see our local revenue, we're about $21,327,160. And our state is $35,78111. And you'll see on the next slide, I'll show you the percentages, our total revenue sources. And we do get about $2 million in the federal funds. We do not have those federal numbers yet. There, there's talk that, based on what the governor presented, there could be a reduction, but we will not have those final numbers quite yet. So currently in there, you'll see just what the state has projected. So 61% of our funds come from the state, 36% are local, and 3% are your other, the federal. And we have other, just sale of fixed assets, as you know, Richard stated last meeting, about like 26,000 from a municipal bid that we did. So it's very minimal. So the major expenditure increases, we've kind of touched on this. You'll see wages went up 314,790. Healthcare is the big one, $1,373,843. And Peers' went up 109,27. Major revenue increases, so our real estate taxes, our assessment amount has increased, which is fantastic. And we've increased our collection rate, which has resulted in an increase of 225,964. Earnings on investments, and the interest rates are still pretty high. We also changed our bank accounts to sweep account. All of our money stays in our savings account and then sweeps into the checking when it's needed to cash checks. That way, we can continue to earn a higher yield on all of those funds, which should result between that and the Fed's not decreasing the rate yet, an additional $65,000 in earnings. Our transportation subsidy increased around 169,000. If you remember last year, the state had increased the transportation subsidy, but it's a year behind. So they increased it last year, so it's reflected in this year's budget. So there's a $169,000 increase in that line item. And our income tax, we increased that about $100,000 just based on the history of the past couple of years. That has been coming in pretty steady. Moving on to the state budget. So the governor presented the budget in February. So total basic education fund is 8.2 billion. It's a $75 million increase, or 1.92% increase from what he presented in last year's budget. 300 million is distributed through the fair funding formula. As you remember, last year, I went through that whole, how the whole funding formula is broken down. It's a very complex process. So with those additional 300 million that go through that formula, we are getting this year 72,583. It's very minimal from the state. But they did not put as much money this year into the funding formula. Last year was about 525 million. Total special ed funding is projected at 1.2 billion, or $40 million increase from last year, which is 2.69%. And we're projected to receive an increase of $66,115 for our special ed funding. Again, none of these numbers are final yet. They're still working on them at the state level. So 526 million has been put in for the additional adequacy formula funding. If you remember, we did not receive that funding last year. That used to be the previous level of funding, is what is commonly referred to. So they put 526 million additional this year into that funding formula instead of the basic ed funding formula. So that means 152 schools are not receiving any of the adequacy funding this year, and we're, again, one of them. So we are getting $0 from that. Had they put that money into the basic ed formula, we would be getting that money through our, through the formula in our ADMs. But since it's going through the adequacy funding, we do not get that. And they did not change how they did the formula last year. So if you got it last year, you automatically get it this year. So you get 526 additional funds are running through that formula. But there was no change in the formula. So we are not getting that, but there is hopefully hope that people are advocating to get these 152 schools something.
I can, yeah, I can. So there's three, they call them the P groups. There's the PASO, which is a professional association that I belong to, I'm the superintendent. There's PASBO, which is the association that Kristen belongs to. Then there's PSBA. So they call them the three Ps. They tend to work together for advocacy at the state level, okay? So for instance, I'm, I, I serve the IU up here on advocacy for this area. So we help set the initiatives for the year. And then, and then, you know, I just, I just got elected to that and I wanted to be part of it because of this. The 152 schools, we are, we are absolutely pushing this across the state because it's, it's really unfair for that, those many districts. So this has been a big talking point at, at our professional level. And it, it needs to be a talking point because last year, they told, you know, they say things like last year that, you know, then they'll have new numbers for this year based upon what you've done previously. And they stuck with the same exact formula from last year. So I do know that we're trying our best because this is, this is really important. And, and I'd like to think that the state's considering that. I know that Senator, came out Senator Pittman from Indiana County talked a lot about this. He's the head, he's the head down there, that this needs to be reconsidered and relooked at. So please know that we're going to, we're going to keep monitoring this and keep pressing on this particular issue.
Is the funding formula still being contested legally?
That was last year's, they, yeah, they didn't. This was out in the moment with the adequacy funding. That's kind of how they fixed the formula, is they gave all these other, they created a new formula for the adequacy funding. But again, we don't, we don't get any of those dollars that are distributed through that.
In our decision to give more money to the state, we were said that we would get some money back, and so that didn't really happen.
We got the 72,000 through the formula because they put the 526 million dollars in the adequacy formula instead of the basic ed formula. So, but yes, if they would change this, maybe they will, put it in the basic ed, then we will receive additional funds.
Thank you.
Now, is this something we can solicit our politicians, local politicians, to go down and argue this?
Yeah, you could, yes, that's something that you could help. And you'll see whenever we get here to the next bullet point on the statewide charter reform. So this is where I was talking. If you recall, we're paying like 16,000 for a regular ed. This is our outside cyber numbers, and then the 26,000 for special ed. The state is proposing to do the outside cyber reform of $8,000 per student per year. So that would save us substantially in this year's budget. However, they have put this on the table every year and it has never passed. This year, it is a little different because the auditor generals went to all these outside cyber schools and did an audit, and the fund balances are substantial.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I have a few.
Substantial, like a budget our size around 60 million. You know, we'll get to our fund balance, but they have like 300 million in their fund balance. We do not have anywhere close to that. And they don't have brick and mortar buildings, which is why this is a hot topic this year. So if anything, this year would maybe be the year that this would get passed.
It passed the House last year, but then it died in the Senate. It was supposed to be revived into the governor's budget, but it fizzled out with that. But it didn't pass the House.
But as Tim said, we want to get with our.
Yes, so here, helping.
So the representatives voted against that proposal, ours. Reluctantly, it still passed, or not reluctantly, reluctantly to them, it still passed. I welcome someone to describe to me why that is a bad thing. So if I can connect two dots. We pay $16,000 when a kid goes to PA Cyber, right? But if a kid wants to come here from an outside school, we charge $13,000.
For adults, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kristen's right, their fund balances are outrageous. Well over 100,000, or, I'm sorry, 100 million, 200 million. I looked at the community, researched them. Please hold us accountable to how we're performing and how the money's being spent. But research Agora Insight, PA Cyber. Their admin overhead is, they have admin earning $200,000. The initial founder of PA Cyber, I believe, was in prison for 20 months for. Research how well they're performing. They're getting 10% kids proficient, 4% kids proficient in math and science and reading. Go to their schools, research how they're performing. This is money we're spending. If you do the kindergarten math, you take their total budget and divide by the student population. Yes, per pupil it's small, but they don't have a brick and mortar. They don't have transportation, they don't have food. If a child wants to participate in extracurricular, we pay for that. They come here and play and do extracurricular. So please welcome somebody to tell me how reform is a bad idea. Because I would love to have a conversation so that we can move forward. But research those schools and research our school into the money they have and the money we're sending them. And the last point, since I'm speaking, is we are 1.3 million as a deficit. The money we spent to outside cyber was 1.2 million.
Currently this year.
Currently, which is likely to go up maybe in a few months. So it's almost the, the same amount of deficit. So cyber reform would not fix some of the problems we have, but it is a big head start. We perform better with much less. And we also have to provide many other services that they don't. So check their enrollment, check their staff, check their fund balances and their performance.
You know, and to me, this is not a, this should not be a political conversation. It should be a financial conversation. And what the auditor general found, we, we found instances of cyber charter schools legally paying, using taxpayer dollars on things like staff bonuses, gift cards, vehicle payments, fuel stipends. Additionally, the Commonwealth Charter Academy spent 106 million to purchase and/or renovate 21 buildings. and/or renovate twenty-one buildings, which to us seems a bit out of the ordinary for a public school. This district spent thirty-three million over the last how many years? Scrimping and saving, working their tail off to try to, to try to make sure that we have a little bit, and that, and that these folks get all this money to do all this? I have a problem with it. You know, we have the retirees come in here and tell us they don't want us to tax, which guess what? They should come in and tell us that. We have our teachers come in and say, we need lower class sizes. I'm okay with them coming in and telling us that. I'm meeting with parents next week who are coming in and saying, don't cut our programs, don't cut our athletics. So our whole constituent, across our whole district, and yet this, this is where we need to be focusing our time. If we come together as one, even putting aside our differences, this is the kind of stuff that we have to do for this district. I'm, I'm, I was shocked when I saw this. I've been, I was just at a conference, I probably, I told everyone I would be calm tonight. But I'm very passionate about Penn Crest. I want what's best for our students, and I also want what's best for our retirees. I also want what's best class size wise. And so, and I don't want to cut programs, like we saw Cambridge Springs winning the By the way, beating my old alma mater, I used to be principal. Congratulations, it gives me a little bragging rights now. But, but that's all I want to say. I think if we come together collectively, we can do great things for that. And I think we have to advocate on our behalf, so.
So I think their argument is they can't, they don't have the taxpayer base to raise funds, to raise revenue. But what happens is they take our money and spend it unwisely, is I think what Mr. Ford was saying, and not investing in things with good outcomes. And so then that leaves us with less, and so we either have to cut, or we have to generate revenue on our constituents, which is a bad answer and a bad answer. So please, we, Kristen listed the schools where our money is going. You can go on, it's very easy to research how well they're performing, their administrative pay, their fund balances. You would be, if that was us, if that was us, we'd be having an auditorium filled and a lot of screaming at our microphone.
I'm in favor, and I'm probably a little different than most educated, I'm in favor of competition. I think it makes you better. I'm, I'm not even saying that we shouldn't help fund those schools, okay? But what I am saying, let's make it reasonable so that, so that we could, what, Kristen, if they went down to eight thousand, what would be, what would we save as a, as a district roughly? I'm putting you on the spot.
It's in my notes that I couldn't access, but it's roughly like eight hundred thousand dollars, I believe, this. I mean, we're gonna save like a million dollars.
Right. Figure roughly half. Right, so that's what we're saying, be reasonable. I mean, I'm all about, hey, we'll compete with anyone, but put us on the fair grounds to compete. And so that's all I'm asking.
We are competing, and we're out competing with far less.
Yeah, you're right, because our scores are better.
We are doing better, yes.
Well, and I think that's the thing that we need to focus on, and I was gonna address that, is we need to make sure people know that how poorly these cyber schools are doing. Now, a lot of these people, a lot of parents are not, I've talked to a few parents, they say, well, what's the difference? What's the difference in the cyber school? I said, check the scores. You're not held the same, you're not held accountable like we are. Those schools do not get the, know the right. If our scores come out like that, we'd be on the front page of the news, Erie TV, news channel would be down here, I mean, we'd be all over. With cyber schools, nobody says a word about it.
There's a hidden cost too. Do we have numbers on how many leave for cyber in general?
I don't have this.
I don't have that.
So when a child leaves and goes into a school that doesn't perform as well, now we have the hidden cost, which is almost impossible to try to put a number to, to try to catch that child up. You see that over and over again. Now, there are many good schools out there, and it's a great option for a lot of families. And I think Mr. Ford's right, this isn't a knock on cyber, it has benefits. But man, that eight hundred thousand dollars would do good right now, and we're one point two, or one point three deficit.
But I think what I see, since Mr. Ford and the new board is here, is the test scores and the numbers, thanks to the teachers, are going up for us, where cyber is not going in that direction. So it's really at the better value to be here bringing order with us. But thank you and the teachers for making that happen. Go on, finish.
So how can you help? As we kind of talk, get ahold of the state legislators, and PSBA went ahead and provided a sample letter. If you, my presentation will be posted tomorrow on the website, you can go ahead and you can click on the link. Here's the email, you can copy and paste it. It came from PSBA. So it's just a template, and you can send it to Senator Michelle Brooks and Representative Beth Bradroy.
Oh, we need to put Kathy.
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 Kathy, okay, I can.
Well, I was gonna say, I did talk, tried to talk to Michelle Brooks at the last Republican convention, or dinner I went to, and I will say I was very disappointed because she basically told me she had no time, even though I am a constituent and I did vote for her. But they did not seem, and I tried talking to Brad Roy also, and they did not want to talk about this at all. I do not know what their reasoning is. I'm sure somebody else on this, on this board could tell me, but yeah, I don't know, but I was very disappointed, and they were very stand on, stand offish when I brought it up. So I do say, as many letters we can get out, we should.
That's the key. They've heard from us board members, and I think they're just getting tired of it.
Quite honestly, I've, I've reached out to several politicians in the last few months. John Fetterman is the only one that has reached back to me. I was totally shocked with that one. I was totally shocked. Our local ones have not got back to me on anything.
I think we just need to take that letter and flood them, not from us, but from the
I couldn't believe John Fetterman sent that out.
Check.
That was nice. I'm not saying that we shouldn't send the letter and that I support this, but at the same time, we can't say that it's all the state's fault. Like, I feel like that's what we've talked about the last twenty minutes. Like, you know, we have issues too, we do. And we need to be, and I'm not saying we shouldn't petition, you know, our government officials, because we should. And obviously, there's issues there that should be addressed, but you know, we need to also be working in-house too, so.
Well, I know you like to say it every year, but the state is responsible for a lot of this, because they could be helping us fight some of this.
I mean, yeah, eight hundred thousand dollars.
And I know you keep saying we can just cut more and cut more and cut more, but there's only so much we can cut.
No, but you can gain efficiency. If I ran a grocery store, ran it like this whole district.
Educating kids and teaching their, finding a store is the same.
Yeah.
I found that.
We gotta, we gotta start with us. We gotta start with us.
And I, and I absolutely agree. I agree with you, David. But when we look at our starting point compared to where we were, we have, we're working really hard to start with us. We are. We've gone through just about every line item and that, and we're gonna go back through it again, and we're gonna keep going back through it to try to bring that down. We really truly are, I, because I agree. Clean your own house up before you start throwing rocks at everybody else's. And so we're doing that without, we're trying not to impact students, and we're trying to get out here, you know? If we have students here in the middle, we want to try to maintain everything right here close to them. We want to get out here and cut out here. And so that's what we're looking at right now, is all, because in here, you know what's in here? That's your educators. And so if we can stay away from those and get this out here under control and become more efficient, look at supplies and look at all that, then, then that's what we should be doing. And that's what, we really truly are doing that for the last month, almost. Kristen, are you getting sick of me yet?
No.
I've, I've been every day.
Every day, though.
Every day. I call her every day and say, hey, how about this? Hey, how about this? And so, but we are, we are, we are trying.
I commend you guys for that, I really do. I'm just trying to say we need to be careful not to point finger, you know, we need, we need to apply everything to ourselves too, so.
It's the best way to approach profit. You know, this is not a for-profit here. This is, this is a service. When you look at those fund balances of some of these cyber schools, it looks like they're doing it for profit. They're charging hundreds of millions.
I'd like to say and remind the PAEA, when we were negotiating contracts, that PAEA said they were going to consider looking for other options in healthcare that might reduce our costs, which could really go a long way in helping the district. So I'm hoping, as we're drawing into other negotiations in the future, that that's being
Moving on to the federal budget. So we received title funds, almost one point one million dollars are in the budget for title funds. If you were at the community engagement night at Big Wood Elementary, Mrs. Feely went over what we use all of our title funds for. I know there's a lot of talk out there with the federal budget. PD doesn't know what's going on yet. We have not gotten any updates really on that. Currently this year, it's front end loaded, so we should be fine. Going into next year, it's in the governor's budget this year, but we really don't know what's happening yet. There is a concern of the potential impact of the federal fund being lost, but when we know more, we'll definitely pass along, but we currently don't have any additional information. The fund balance, you'll see here, we currently have a fund balance of fourteen million nine sixty-one five seventy-three. With that fund balance, it's, you want to have four months in the reserves. Currently, we run about four point five million dollars of expenditures every month. So in the event that the state does not pass their budget, because we have to have our budget passed by June thirty, the state should have theirs passed. It has not been passed in June. So it's been a hard work in December, so we need to make sure that we have a healthy fund balance to pay our expenditures in the event that the state doesn't give us our funds, because we are heavily funded by the state. If you remember, it's about six point nine. You'll notice the committed lineup here for the future debt service. So we take that half mil that we raised in taxes in each one of those years, and it is in a separate account to pay that balloon payment here that's gonna be happening in about sixteen to eighteen years now. So that money will accumulate every year in that account, so that is the keynote on that slide. It is in there, we do transfer it every year. So next steps, we're gonna continue to monitor the state and federal budget changes, staffing needs and enrollment numbers, department budgets, like Mr. Ford said, we go through this all the time. When we get a retirement letter, we, you know, we do the evaluation to see if, you know, we can save any costs there. We're looking at every line item within the departments to see if there's cost savings there. We're just kind of waiting on some final numbers from the state and federal level. We plan to host a finance committee meeting on April twenty-eighth, up here at the high school, Sagertown High School at five thirty in the auditorium. That is our community engagement night, so it's an easy, I mean, everyone was already planning on being here, so we thought it would be good. Typically, this committee of the whole meeting has replaced committee meetings, but in the event of the budget, since it's such a big topic, we're gonna go ahead and host a separate meeting, and we're gonna hope to have you a little bit more concrete numbers here in the next couple of weeks. We need to approve a preliminary budget on May twelfth, the next meeting, and then approve the final on June ninth, the June fourth meeting. That was a lot of information. I hope it really wasn't an hour. I apologize, but is there any questions?
May have been me a little bit here tonight, all right?
Yeah, I can't take full blame.
All right, I'll, I'll take a little credit.
If there's no questions now, you certainly can send me questions, so we can go ahead and get you answers to those on the twenty-eighth. This year, in comparison to all the other years, this is the best, best year as far as me presenting a budget, that we have come in, you know, one point three is significantly lower than where we have been in the past. So like, you know, Mr. Ford said, I mean, the three of us are meeting constantly. We're constantly going over this, it's about every day, seeing where we can improve the budget to get it closer to being balanced. Thank you.
I would like to congratulate, I don't have much on my report tonight, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Martinez on a, on a well-earned, the gold apple award. So congratulations to Mrs. Martinez, to the Robotics Club, and wish them well out in Ohio, and see if they can bring back some national hardware. So at this point, we'll move into our department reports. Mrs. Feely, education.
Sure. Our first item will be the special education plan, which has been up on the website for twenty-eight day public review, and now I'm bringing it to you to the board to pass it so that I can then submit it to the state. Nothing in there has changed in the course of twenty-eight days. And we also, as we had mentioned, had our cyclical monitoring process last week with the state. They were here for three days. It's quite intense. They review or monitor us on over three thousand items. Any item that is a no is a finding. Our preliminary accident review from the Department of Ed has us sitting at about seven items that we need to take a look at. Some of them, most of them actually being very simple to fix, like the, well, it's not really a simple fix, but it is not necessarily an item that we have a lot of control over our, the number of students that we have opting out of our PSSA. Keystone was a finding for us, because we did not get ninety-five percent. So we will have to create a plan to try to get more of our students in grades four, eight, and eleven to participate. And then looking at some items with, you know, having the school resources, resource officers in our buildings also, how we deal with students with special education needs when they're involved in an incident involving the police department is something we will have to take a look at and redefine. And we also will have a finding because we did not have ninety-five percent of our faculty complete the survey, so we will have to address that as well. So again, minor findings, they were very, I will say impressed with our file review, is he was impressed with the level of our paperwork and how hard our faculty are working to meet the students' needs in this district. So it was a good process. The formal CAD will be out in thirty to sixty days. The program of studies are on here for approval from the, for the elementary schools and the, and PCA, our cyber academy. There were no changes to the elementary program studies for next year. The PCA program of studies has added a few courses in ELA, math, and science to help adjust to the new incoming standards and options for students. Also, the Cambridge High School teams needed to nationals and national Tennessee. Excuse me, you'll see an action item on there to approve that, sure, that's at no cost to the district. They have a lot of outside funding for that. And I think this is the fourth year, I believe, they've made it to nationals. They've, they've been very successful. You'll see resources on there for approval, including junior achievement, All About Cars, which is a program for students in eleventh, twelfth grade. It's a pilot program for them, where they come in and talk to them about car ownership, purchasing a car, what the responsibility is as a car owner. It sounds like a very good opportunity for students to learn some of those real-life skills that we don't often have an opportunity to cover. And again, congratulations to the Cambridge High School RoboBots team. That's a fantastic win for them, and I wish them the best of that. And that's it.
Okay. Mr. Luke, Facilities Transportation.
So before you, you'll see an action item to approve turnkey service with EAP Industries. They are a company that handles hazardous materials, packaging and transportation of them. As we started to prepare for our construction project over at Cambridge Springs High School this summer, we were presented with a couple of our science teachers presented to us that they had chemicals that were in storage that were, they were no longer using, were stored somewhat unsafely, that they wanted to see disposed of, as we'll be doing flooring in that area, and they're worried about the disturbance of those chemicals. We have partnered with EAP in the past. We did a project with them, a small project with them in twenty-twenty-two, that was about six thousand dollars. We did a project with them, a small project with them in 2022, that was about $6,000, Sager Town School. We also did a project last year, which you may not remember. That was a free program through DEP. We had to sit through a training, and they basically paid for a clean-out here at Sager Town. Unfortunately, that's, you know, a once-in-a-lifetime program. That's not something, a service that's going to be available to us this time. So we got all the teachers, the science teachers together. We go through all of their rooms as far as chemicals that they needed to see removed. Like I said, a lot of them are stored in glass containers with no tops or with unsecureable lids. Those, all those chemicals need to be repackaged, manifested, and transported by a DEP-approved contractor. That is why the cost to do that service is $22,096. We reached out to, I would say, at least a dozen contractors throughout the state. Some in our area, some as far away as State College, Harrisburg. EAP was the only one that gave a damn about that. So it is something that is important for us to do in order to be able to get those chemicals cleaned up and removed. That way, we can safely complete our asbestos remediation and flooring in those rooms. So that'll be for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions as it relates to that.
Just where's the funding for the $22,000 coming from?
It's a great question. I think, you know, I'll let Kristen and Mr. Ford help with that. But I think that we raised some money through the immunity bid. That was about $26,000. This would chew up a lot of that.
Okay.
It's not something, you know, within our department budget that we can accommodate. So, but it is important to our mission this summer.
And unfortunately, some of these bottles and stuff just weren't never marked properly. Now we have new teachers in chemistry and sciences, and they don't know what they are.
Makes you sick. It's a lot of money for removing chemicals.
Oh, I agree.
Really sick.
Yeah. But if we weren't a public school, we could do it.
Since this goes under somewhat of the repairs, we had contingency money. I'm sure you guys listen to that.
We did. We can see-
Or is it not eligible for that?
It's part of the construction, so we were kind of, we need to see where we come in under our contingency funding. We won't have that idea probably until August, until it's completed and then we know what the punch list is. But we will, you'll see a budget transfer on, for next month. We're going to, we'll evaluate the building budget, see if we can take anything there. We'll probably piecemeal it, like Mr. Luke had said, there is the sale of assets that we just sold that will help offset it, and then we can look within the maintenance line item to see if there's going to be any, a couple hundred dollars here and there we can transfer. But yes, if we could take it out of our capital, but again, remember, all that bond money is allocated. So I'm hoping with the interest we're earning on the money that's currently in there, that's where I'm hoping to pull that money from, because those numbers change every month with the interest that we accrue on those funds. So that's where I'd like to take it from. But again, we kind of need to see where our final Cambridge project comes into consideration, whether we're available or not. It might be coming from a general one, but it's something that needs to be done to continue on with our projects. It's just one of those unfortunate unplanned expenditures that pop up.
It's not something I really know a lot about, like disposing of chemicals, but we like talk to Lord at all about, you know, who they would use for, if they have any recommendations? Or I'm just thinking, they're the biggest-
Chemical plant or-
Yeah, yeah, like, I don't know, maybe they have a way to help us. I don't know. I just hate to just jump in and-
We talked to DEP directly, and I mean, our options are very limited to do this. No, no, it's all at our-
We're not talking about large power, are we?
There's quite an extensive list. There's a lot of acids, a lot of, you know, corrosive acids that you can tell that have been in that room for 30 years and are eating away at the cabinets that are back there, you know, just from being stored there somewhat improperly. I mean, it's just, it's a safety issue as much as it is. Yes.
I agree we need to get rid of, I was just asking how much, I mean, if we're talking-
The chemistry lab is the majority of it. Biology and physics are minimal. The chemistry lab is the majority of it, and it's, you know, a 10 by 10 room. It's just totally packed full, the back room. So it's a lot.
Jordan just leaned in to me and said, "Get rid of those chemicals." Is there any safety policy written on these chemicals? And their storage?
30 years ago, the regulations were a lot-
Yeah, I mean, just for them to hit the road now, they have to be, everything has to be completely repackaged, sealed, documented, all that stuff has to get turned over to the state. There's a lot of paperwork. I mean, we just-
Alright, so we have our traditional, the stuff every month, the disbursements, treasury reports. You'll see all that on there. We have budget transfers. You can see we're taking some from the budgetary reserves and transferring that for our safety and security supplies, which you guys knew was coming. We hired our free officers. We had to outfit them all, so there's some costs there. We have tuition costs. Again, we put money in our reserves to help offset our cyber costs last year in hopes that they did the reform. They didn't, so that money was still on our budget in the reserve. So you're seeing the transfer out there, transferring a little bit out for the legal services. And then just within the building, so nothing too major there. The Crawford County Program's tech budget is on for approval. So like we said before, we have 30% of that, their budget is passed on to us for our students to attend that program. So it was already passed, I believe, at the VOTEC last month. So now it's, every district has to pass that. So that is a reduction from last year, so that's good. Again, when I did our budget, these numbers weren't actual yet, so you receive, you'll see a reduction in our budget based on these final numbers. The wood drin contracts on there for our security officers that we have at events, the cost went up slightly to $25. It's nothing major. Again, still the three-hour minimum, and we have a couple donations on there. A couple being lords, you remember you, last month you approved the $8,000. Will that check actually come in at $8,650? So we're bringing back that additional $650 for you guys to accept that donation. So that's just part of that large amount. Big Wood Elementary, there's purchase on there for $500 for library books, and Kyle Greathouse donated $1,000 for the Cambridge Springs Robotics Club. That's all I have.
Thank you. We're going to move into the voting part of the meeting at this point in time. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? Approval of minutes. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approved the following minutes, March 10th, 2025, which was the school board's meeting.
So move, second.
Motion to the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say. Motion carried.
On the policy, before we go on, I have a question. Shop teacher, Mr. Sturtevant brought up a concern with the policy. He's the wood shop teacher of Big Wood, for those of you who don't know. And he's running out of lumber very fast, and all of his stuff is through donations. Penncrest really hasn't bought any materials in quite a few years. The problem is, if he gets somebody who wants to donate lumber, sometimes it's like, oh, it's here if you want to take it. But he can't take it till he gets approval from the board. My question is, is there a point where, why does teachers need, or why would they need our approval to get lumber or wood products or art supplies or other stuff like that? That if somebody's willing to donate it or give it to them, why don't they need our approval for something? There's not, I don't see anything controversial over free supplies to, for our kids to have in shop classes. So I just ask if we could think about making a mess to some of this. The board doesn't have to approve every little thing. If we have a policy in place and it's followed strictly, I just think it's crazy and it's making it harder on some of our teachers.
I would agree. I would think in that situation, they could bring it to me and I could give them approval.
That's what they're asking. That would be something for sure. I mean, I would probably say the best way, Jordan, you can help me out. The best way to do that would maybe just do a vote on under new business to authorize specifically for the wood or art supplies. Would you agree?
Yeah, that's fine.
Would that be alright? Even though if it's written in policy, that would supersede? How would that work?
I mean, if you're going to make an amendment to the policy itself, you should probably get it on for a first read.
That's kind of what I was figuring. I like, if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Yeah, that would be the right way to do it.
And that way they have, you know, they can, that way they can just text or call Mr. Ford and say, hey, this gentleman wants to give me a bunk of lumber. I want to be able to pick it up. Okay, you're good to go. I don't think we should have to approve every little thing like this. This is getting ridiculous to approve.
What we could do, Tim, do is you, maybe at the next meeting, you might suspend the requirement for any additional reads, you know, to try to get it implemented a little quicker, because it is sort of a policy that makes good logical sense that we could get it, you know, in quicker.
That would be great, because Ford is trying to rapidly get some material for next year. He's out.
Yeah, I'd get it on for-
We don't have money to buy it, so.
Sure, I'd get it on for your next meeting, and then maybe take a look at trying to get that one, you know, in front of the board.
And I know the art teachers are also looking for supplies, too, and I don't want them to have to wait. We could also, we could do, if we put it on there for the community night, we could have a real quick meeting afterwards to get that on, too.
You could.
We could do that. That's why we put it on there for that reason, in case stuff like this came up, so.
We'll have to advertise that.
We'll have to advertise it.
You would.
We have enough time, though, correct?
I was just going financially. I was just saying financially.
She does that to me all the time, too.
What would the salt be, though? That it would just be superintendent's approval on a donation, just to add that to the policy? Is that the salt?
Let me look at, I want to look at the policy a little clearer, and then I'll come back with recommendations on a first read of the policy.
Right.
That's, yeah, that's what I was kind of getting at, was-
Not that you can keep track of them all either, but it's kind of nice sometimes to see what, and I'm not saying we need to approve all of them either, but it's kind of nice to see who gave stuff. You know, it could be in superintendent's letter, you know. But just, you know, it's kind of nice to see who's donating.
Absolutely. Right, they're not asking to not let the board know.
Right, I know, right.
Is there a way to approve it?
You can.
I don't know. Jordan, is there a way for us to approve, like, after the fact? You know, or, I think, I could go down to Sturtevant tomorrow and give him some lumber, and he can take it and start using it next week. Can we just approve it, like, at the next meeting, that this was donated? And if anybody ever had a problem with it, then we have that conversation of what happens?
Yeah, I mean, my voice would be, if you're going to make a change to the policy, if you want to do it at your next regular board meeting or after your community night, as long as it's properly advertised, I don't really have an issue with it. For a policy like that, you know, reads, you can have as many reads as you want. So if you want to suspend the read requirement to try to get that one implemented more quickly, then you could do that.
Okay. And I do know other community members have wanted to donate supplies for robotics and other things, too, that there's always a question, everybody's a little hesitant of donating because of all the rule changes from the past and the policy changes. Not everybody just goes in and reads policies well. So it's easier to just not do it than, I think we're hurting ourselves. We need to not make it difficult. We need to make it as easy as we can. We're not donating books or anything like that. It's just supplies to help out, help the students out.
As long as something states that's material or supplies, you know, non-reading materials, so that way it wouldn't cover, it wouldn't change it fully.
Mr. Ford, you got your task.
Yep.
Here's better time. Knock that out.
We'll take the question back here.
I just wanted to ask really quick, Jordan, what's the amount of money for the de minimis? Because if it's, you know, brought up at the meeting and it's a de minimis amount of money, isn't it allowed to be put on and voted on tonight, like, that can be added to the agenda? As long as it's, what's that number?
Yeah, so, I mean, my take on it is that doesn't really apply, because it's a policy change. So, you know, what I would do is what I said.
Right, I agree with the policy, but like, if it's a donation and we, you know, if we knew what the donation was, couldn't we add just this one donation to the agenda tonight, as long as it was de minimis in amount of money? Like, if it was $200, could you put that on as new business and vote on it and still be within, like, the sunshine?
Yeah, I mean, so you're losing sight of what the policy change is. So the policy change wasn't on the agenda at all.
Right, I guess, like I said.
So I don't really think that, you know, it's trying to combine two things that I don't think are really capable of being combined. I appreciate the question, but-
We're just trying to streamline it, so if Bert gets an opportunity to get something, he can't say, well, I have to wait and present to the board next month, and then they have to prove. He wants to pick it up now, he can call Sean and say, hey, I got a chance to get this lumber.
I guess I, I assumed that you, that there was something, like, he already had the ability to get.
Well, no, he lost some.
Right now in the moment.
He lost some because somebody else grabbed it before he got it approved.
I got you. Thank you, thank you.
So we can approve this.
Thank you, Jordan.
Yeah, no, I think everyone's, you know, the discussion on it's really, we'll take it, Mr. Brown. I mean, you want to try to make it as easy as possible, and, you know, Mrs. Brown, I think you hit on the de minimis requirement, too. I just wouldn't get in the habit of doing it, so I'd follow your policy, make sure it's on for a first read. And then, if you want to suspend the read requirement to get it through more quickly, then go right ahead and do it.
Okay, moving on. Thank you. We have a first, we have a first reading tonight of policy 200, which is enrollment in the district. This particular policy, Penncrest had a more restrictive requirement for parents coming in to enroll their students in the documentation that they had to have to do that. PDE, Department of Education, has come out, and they have more, more ways to register, more ways to show identification. So what we've done is we've taken what's in the PDE in the first reading tonight, and we've added that into our policy. So that's what you see in policy 200. So if you look at that here for the next month, you have any questions, we can look at that next month. The second reading tonight is the following policies. So resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approved the following policies. 008 organizational chart, 103 discrimination Title IX sexual harassment affecting students, 104 discrimination Title IX sexual harassment affecting staff, 121 student travel, and 236.1 threat assessment. And finally, 626, the federal fiscal compliance.
So move, second.
Motion to the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say. Motion carried.
Under the education, I'm breaking this down a little bit here tonight. So we're going to resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approved the consent agenda in education for items B through J as presented.
So move, second.
Motion to the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say. Motion carried.
Education letter K. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approved the attached resources and materials in accordance with policy 109, which is the 2024-25 library books.
So move. Second.
Motion to the second. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, Kristen, just on, we got K and L here. What do we, what's budgeted for books per year?
$750, it's a flat rate for the building.
Per school, okay. So this would be doubling that up, am I correct?
Correct. They're asking, I believe it's for $1,500. Correct, you're asking, I believe it's for fifteen hundred.
What's in the budget right now?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Okay.
If they haven't spent anything out of that line.
Okay, gotcha. So we would be overspending it by seven fifty then personally.
Correct.
But this is last year's budget we never approved.
Yeah, but this is this year's budget that we're on right now.
But this is a, this is a group that we never approved last.
Right. Right. I guess what I'm saying is I'll only go with what we have budgeted right now, I'm not gonna spend more than what we have budgeted in that year. I'm fine with either or list, but I don't wanna go back necessarily and spend money that we had in the past and don't currently have budgeted right now. I'd rather just stick with what we budgeted, a good, a good budget sticks to the lines.
But so, the, the seven ones for next year's budget, right?
This would come out of this year's budget, the twenty-five, twenty-six.
And then there's all.
They both come out of this year's.
But why?
No.
This year's twenty-four for me. Yeah. Only this. Only K will come out of this year's budget.
This year, sorry, yeah.
And then per policy, they have to get the approval now for twenty-five, twenty-six resources. Correct, yep.
Yep.
Correct. So we're approving, this is two years' worth of books?
No.
Yes? So we're approving this year's books and next year's, last year, sorry, last year's books. That were never purchased. So we are approving seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of books that we agreed on as a budget last year when we approved the general budget.
That was unspent, so the fiscal year, it doesn't roll over. It's use it or lose it essentially, so that money doesn't carry over to this year, it rolls into fund balance. So twenty-three, twenty-four has been closed into fund balance out of twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, so we didn't spend any last year, but we approved to spend seven hundred and fifty last year.
Correct.
And so now we're, we're asking to be approved for another seven fifty for this year, is that correct?
Yes. But they put in a minus fifteen hundred that they're asking for both of their years.
So they didn't get anything last year and we approved money to be spent for them last year.
But we didn't necessarily have that money.
Well, because of the policy, they made it so we could, they couldn't get them ordered in time. Because we kept screwing over on policy. And I believe they didn't order books the year before that because of the policy. I think there's three years they have not ordered any books.
We tabled a, we tabled a policy read, I believe.
Yes.
And so they were unable to purchase books last year.
Right. And the year before also.
What I'm saying is I think we're currently doing good on our budget and I would rather stay that way and follow the budget. So that, that's what I'm at with it.
Our kids need books too. Seven fifty would come from the fund balance for the last year that we promised?
So.
The new balance transfer. Seven fifty.
We would have to transfer money into that line item because it would over, it would be overspent, you know, whatever you go over that seven fifty, I have to transfer money from our budget from a different line item. So whether that comes from the building line item, if they have an additional seven hundred and fifty, I'll spend that cut off for your buildings, March thirty-first. It's only your necessary spending to get you through, you know, graduation, like diplomas, things like that. So that's where I would look first to see if there is an additional seven hundred and fifty in any of those lines that were not spent and transfer that into your six forty object for the books. But yeah, once the money rolls over, it's, it's use it or lose it at the end of the year essentially, and that money rolls to fund balance. So you're not necessarily taken out of the fund balance if we have money in other line items that weren't spent. But at the end of the year, if we're over budget in all of our categories, then yes, you're taking out of the balance.
My fear is you kind of can get, we can kind of get too comfortable transferring back and forth to move, and you have to do some of it obviously. But when we don't have, you know, like if we're on track right now, I'd like to stay, to stay on track, but.
Any other comments or questions?
I do have some curriculum money that could be transferred that has not been signed.
Yeah, it's not really our job to figure out where the money comes from. The kids need the books. Let's just.
Well, like I said, libraries have been out for three years.
Yeah.
And I think this is crap and it's kind of, you gotta help them out.
The smoke. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say.
Close.
Close.
Education letter L, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved the attached resources and materials in accordance with policy one oh nine. This would be for the twenty-five, twenty-six library books.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say. Motion carried.
Under letter, education letter M, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved of the attached dual enrollment agreement with Grove City College.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say. Motion carried.
He gonna make it.
Do you need David to stuff in here for you?
By side, just so you can break it down. There's one chop drop left.
Under education letter N, I'm going to revise the wording. Currently it says, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved student A disciplinary hearing. I would like to change that, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors expelled student A following expulsion hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say. Motion carried.
The facilities and transportation, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved the consent agenda, facilities and transportation, items B and C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say. Motion carried.
Financial report, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved the consent agenda, financial items B through G as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Good question.
Yep.
Since I don't feel, then we'll still be here, same. Any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say. Motion carried.
Under the personnel report. Under personnel, number nine, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved the consent agenda, items B through J.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say. Motion carried.
Under new business, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved to appoint Robert Johnson to the Northwest Tri County Intermediate Unit Five for the three-year term effective July twenty-five through June thirteenth, July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. That's up, Mr. Johnson was serving on that.
So moved.
Second.
First in the second, any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close say. Motion carried.
Under H, under announcements, the board met for executive session on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five for personnel, legal matters and a confidential student issue. We will need to be following this meeting for personnel reasons. Are there any?
Two registered.
Two registered, okay. First, we have Mr. William Shoemaker, Athens Township resident, topic, current state of the MHS softball program. And how about Jillian Shoemaker, Athens Township resident, MHS softball? Are there any other citizen comments on non-agenda items this evening? Thank you. I'll turn this back over to you for Jordan.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.